I am opening the public hearing for the school calendars of 2016 and 17 and 1718. Let the record show that all board members are present for this hearing. The superintendent and the district's administrators are recommending approval for these two years' calendars. I ask Dr. Bruckner or her designee to quickly review their recommendation. Following the review, we will receive questions from the board members, and then after that, we'll take comments from anybody in the audience. So, let's go ahead and have our review. Dr. Bruckner?
Thank you very much, Mr. Grove. Mr. Grove, we are pleased to be here to bring you the 2016-17 and 2017-18 calendars for the second time. We brought these to the board before, and they were approved, but we realized we'd made an error by not having a public hearing. So, these calendars are similar to this year's calendar. They are based on the governor's requirement that we not start school until after the state fair. They build in snow days at the end of the second trimester and snow days at the end of the school year. We've put a comp day in two of the trimesters based on parent-teacher conferences during those times. We've listened to the teachers' request to have three days at the beginning of the school year instead of two. I'd be happy to answer any questions from any board members.
Any board members have any further questions, since we've already visited this earlier? Okay, hearing none. Are there comments from the audience? If so, you can come to the microphone there and address the board. Everybody must be happy, huh? Great. Well, I'll close this public hearing, and we'll deal with this issue in the formal board meeting to come. Okay?
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll for our regular board meeting?
Mr. Arthur?
Present.
Mr. LaFurlough?
Present.
Mr. Kuzier?
Present.
Dr. Ogres?
Present.
Ms. Riley?
Present.
Mr. Hanson?
Present.
Mr. Grove?
Present. Will you join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Bruckner is going to share why we are proud of our students and some introductions.
I'm just giving you a little hint. This may be one of the better board meetings you've ever attended. Not only did it start with phenomenal artwork and beautiful music, but we're going to get an opportunity to honor two of our certified staff members and some safety awards, and then listen to some amazing presentations. You guys are going to be glad you're here, even though some of you would rather be at a basketball game right now across the city, but we're going to make this worth your while. It is my privilege to introduce to you two licensed staff members of the month. We decided to change it up a little bit this month, so let me first of all tell you about Angie Lamb. Angie, come on down. The best part of my job among meeting with you is being able to call teachers oftentimes on a Friday afternoon and say, "Hey, guess what? Call me back." And I'm sure Angie felt that way when she had a message to call the superintendent on a Friday afternoon. Angie Lamb has been with the Council of Schools for 11 years, and she serves as the behavior consultant at College View Elementary School and Kern Middle School. Here's what her nominators shared. Angie Lamb has a passion for helping students and their families without expecting anything in return. Her knowledge of integrated mental health agencies and sheer determination to match services with families has helped so many students at both College View and Kern Middle School. She has taught both colleagues and parents the importance of social-emotional skill development to the same standard that we hold for academics. With Angie's help, teachers are able to adapt their classroom environment and teaching strategies to best fit the needs of students, which keeps them in school. Angie goes out of her way to make sure the mental health needs of students and families are met. She's transported several families to doctor's appointments and stayed with the parents to help them in conversing with the doctor so all information is understood. Angie sacrifices her personal time to make sure families' mental health needs are met. One time, she accompanied a family at an appointment during which the doctor decided to admit the student into the hospital. Angie stayed with the mom at the hospital and transported her back and forth to see the child. Angie is also a CBU and CPI trainer and spends many hours after school teaching other adults how to recognize anxiety in students, and then how to provide the reassurance to prevent behaviors from escalating. Angie finds joy in the success of those she's trained. She's also a valued member of the Council of Schools Behavior Team and is currently enhancing her skill base through training with the University of Iowa, along with some other team members. She works tirelessly to provide common understanding and procedures to ensure the safety and well-being of adults and students. This hard work creates significant improvements in school climate, student behavior, and academic performance. Angie has truly changed children's and families' lives for the better. I could go on, but we wanted to leave room for this paragraph. When Angie learned about the award, she sent me this message. "I'm so blessed to work with such an amazing group of people who have given me the support and encouragement to be able to help our students and families. What an honor to be recognized by colleagues who go above and beyond every day. I love our district and look forward to continuing the very best to find the best ways to provide right supports for our students and children." Cheering Angie on tonight, our College View principal, Sue Rice; Kern principal, Kern principal, Carrie Newman. Saw you sitting next to Kim, and she was kind of like trying to take you. Angie's husband, Josh, and children, Kingston and Kayaus. So, as the Living the Mission honorary tonight, you are receiving this trophy, Licensed Staff Member of the Month, and $50 in gift certificates from the Community Ed Foundation and Stuart Tinley Law to Longhorn Steakhouse. Congrats. Let me introduce you to David Drucker, who's also a licensed staff member this month. Let me tell you about David. We had a call, too. Here's what David's nominators said about him. "If you walk by a classroom and think a celebration is underway, it might just be Mr. Drucker's math class. The amount of excitement and student engagement is one to be envied by all who work with students. Some may purposefully peek into David's classroom whenever they have the opportunity just to see what's going on. You can see the students in this room are genuinely thrilled to be learning. David's gifts became obvious in his interactions with people in general. He's an integral part in the seventh grade team of teachers. Even with adults, he puts effort into establishing relationships and promoting harmony. He encourages those around him, and he often offers humor to lighten the heavier moments that life ensures we all experience. His love of teaching and commitment to students is absolutely infectious. Beyond his ability to build relationships with students and staff and teach students in engaging ways, David leads our school in school spirit and pride. He serves as the emcee of our pep rallies and engages the students and staff in fun and culture-building activities. His sense of humor, mostly dry wit, is wonderful. As a new teaching professional, he has quickly become an advocate for students and serves as a great role model. Kids love him; colleagues love him; we're proud to have him in our school family." David is joined here tonight by his principal, Kim Kazmerchik, and Sam Jessica Plujer, and a host of others cheering him on. I will deliver David's gift certificate and trophy to him on behalf of the Board of Education. So, thank you. Tonight is also the night we do our trimester safety awards, and tonight we are recognizing five different schools or groups for the outstanding safety that they have brought to their own work environment. Every year, we talk about how much we're working on safety. The most important thing is that we're making our employees safe, but by the way, we're also saving some money, which is also important. Each year, we recognize buildings or departments who have made significant improvements in their safety records. This effort is generally a result of their concerted efforts to do so. The following schools have reduced number of injuries or accidents by 50% or greater. Let me first thank Abraham Lincoln, which went from four accidents in 2014 to one accident in 2015. Thank you very much, Principal Bellows. Might you be going somewhere else now? From College View Elementary, which moved from two accidents to zero accidents. From Facilities Maintenance and Custodial Services, which went from two accidents to Kern Middle School, which went from six accidents to three accidents. And Bloomer Elementary went from four accidents to one accident.
Congratulations to all you school buildings who've had a great record of improving safety. And high schools. And middle schools. I'll get it right. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of our agenda as has been presented.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Next is approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 26, 2016. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 26, 2016.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Scott or Jill. Okay, we'll put Scott down. It was simultaneously. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Now, we're to that part of our agenda where there's a chance for members of the public to speak to the board on any issue on the agenda or another issue. Is there anyone that wants to speak? Okay, we'll go on to the next item, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We are honored tonight to let you know about some curriculum work that's been going on in the Fine Arts Department, and that is going to be presented by Dr. Hanslick and And a host of others. Michaela Hill.
You're really not going to hear from me, but I'm going to introduce you to two teacher leaders who are responsible for the great work that we have been able to accomplish so far this school year. And so, they're going to share with you the journey that we've taken this year and three important points to remember about our fine arts curriculum that we have updated this school year. So, let me introduce to you Dr. Terry Hanslick. He is our Fine Arts Consultant for music and drama. And Michaela Hill, she's our K-12 Curriculum Specialist for Visual Arts. This is the Fine Arts Curriculum update where we're at this year. We have three major things that we'd like to talk about tonight. First of all, our Fine Arts Curriculum is based on National Coalition for Core Art Standards, which are brand-new for 2014. We have updated. And the second one is teacher-developed curriculum maps provide guidance and support for instruction. And then, the third point will be Fine Arts Curriculum reaches students unique in powerful ways.
Our first point is our Fine Arts Curriculum is based on-
Excuse me, you need to speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Our first point is our Fine Arts Curriculum is based on the National Coalition for the Core Art Standards. These standards were developed through a collaboration among leaders in all areas of fine arts, including dance, instrumental music, vocal music, theater, and the visual arts. Prior to these new national standards, each area of the fine arts had their own set of standards. The new standards allow us to communicate effectively with students and teachers in other fine arts areas while reinforcing the same concepts. The new standards were developed within four strands, which are creating, presenting, connecting, and responding. These strands allowed us to build a comprehensive curriculum that teaches all parts of fine arts. Students are no longer just creating and producing art and musical performances; they are talking about art, the purpose for the arts, and how we can preserve and promote the arts in our schools and community.
Four years ago, we started this process. We started with single-page curriculum found in the back of file cabinets, folders, sometimes not in the hands of teachers at all. So, we started to dream about developing a curriculum that would teach comprehensively to all the arts in our school district. This is what your teachers have done in the past four years. K-12 program that reaches hundreds of students, thousands of students every day. In music, 25 courses, over hundreds of maps of instruction and unit plans, supported by unpacking planners, that gives specific detail as how we're to teach these units. And then, in all the classes, with the exception of a few elementary classes, we have assessments at the end where we're testing to see, are we reaching the goals of what these maps have spelled out? So, a lot of work has been done by these Fine Arts employees. We have a person here, Mr. Dan Kavanaugh, one of our art teachers from the elementary level, is going to talk about his usage of maps.
My name's Daniel Kavanaugh. I am an elementary art teacher at College View and Roosevelt, and throughout the past five years with the district, many other elementary schools. I started with the district in 2010, and at that time, the visual arts curriculum was a couple of pages in a binder that didn't really have much impact on the content I was teaching, nor did it provide a framework for a frazzled first-year teacher to plan very well, develop the learning experiences. Over the past five years, the fine arts have raised the expectations drastically, pushing Council Bluff's Community School District to the forefront of national fine arts curriculum reform. We used the strands of teaching that run parallel with the national art standards, furthered connections of 21st century skills, and developed exquisite curriculum maps so incoming teachers have clearly identified units. Our units align with other art teachers across the district, so if a student moves within the district, they don't miss a beat because we're teaching the same content at the same time. One example of this in action, or using the standards, the connecting, creating, responding, and presenting, I was moving forward with a fifth-grade architecture unit, and one of my learning goal, or one of the learning goals for the fifth graders, is to be able to connect characteristics of classical architecture to buildings that they can actually identify in the United States. After our responding portion of the unit, it became abundantly clear that I nailed it with some of my groups, and yet with others, not so much. So, because of this responding portion of our units, I was able to identify where some of these skills were lacking, able to catch up with my other students and bring them up to speed, and through this process, success was undeniable. Students were excited about being able to make the connection. They weren't just connecting with one building; they would have a slew of buildings they would be able to connect with and identify. This has been a really long road of revising, correcting, and rearranging. Can't believe it's only been, you said, four years, Terry? That's amazing. We are finally to a point where our curriculum maps are a thorough guide for what each grade level's year will consist of. It's jam-packed of collectively-developed in-house resources, and rewriting an entire curriculum was a process I never expected I was going to be a part of my first-year teaching. But I have an enormous amount of pride in the work that we've accomplished so far, and because of the creative opportunities that it provides for both students and for teachers.
By doing this, we are finding different ways to reach students who typically in fine arts, who think, well, they play, and they sing, and they draw, and they act. But we do more than that. We're teaching kids how music fits in their life, how it fits in society, how it fits in our community, and so we have increased our course offerings. Matter of fact, at the secondary level, we have doubled the number of fine arts classes that we taught five years ago. We use technology to reinforce classroom instruction through the use of Chromebooks, through our piano labs that you helped get us a few years back. One of our goals this year is increase and improve community engagements, like you saw tonight. We challenge the vocal department to bring examples of their work. We're having a lot more sharing of strategies and methods for improving instruction and the resources that go along with that. I challenged a teacher three years ago or two years ago, I'm not sure. We needed a class at the middle level. Teach music through the use of technology. Not using technology to learn, to create music, but using technology to learn about music, because the big phrase is "learning through performance." Well, we're going to use our technology to teach students. So, I've asked Dave Carlson, middle school teacher from Kern and Wilson, to share some of the things he's doing with technology in his Music Through Technology class.
Thank you. This is my 38th year of teaching, and I know of no other class like this that I have ever heard of in those 38 years of teaching. This is a learning to appreciate music through the use of technology. It's just come down to this, kids call it music tech, so it's music tech. And it's one of a kind of its course, and it certainly is the only kind of its course in this district that's ever been offered. The text is entirely online through portal, and thanks to Dr. Hanslick with the architect of this class, it is truly original, not only in its content, but in its use of hands-on technology to engage the students. These are for students who are not enrolled in chorus, orchestra, or band. This is basically, when you were growing up, it's general music, is what this is. Students in this class have written and performed original rap songs, written and designed radio broadcasts, edited music for movie clips, sketched-out theme songs for original situation comedies for television. And another semester, the students are learning how music affects their mind, their brain, and their emotions, and they're learning about how music has an effect on possible memory loss and athletic performance. Starting next week, the kids will be creating their own podcasts in order to embed into a digital resume. Our students have been, and so I thought that was pretty cool. Our students have been asked to reflect in writing on how music affects their everyday life, how music is used to celebrate events and special times in their life, how music can be found in the most unlikeliest of places, and how music can be used to inspire in their individual lives. The class, we're using our own blogs, website to communicate with students from other schools, other thoughts on various topics, such as how music inspires them in their everyday life, their favorite music groups, why they like this music over another type of music. And I posed the question today on the blog site, did they think that this class is what they thought it was going to be? And so, if anybody would be interested in any of this information, just email me, and I'll let you know some links to where you can find out more stuff. So, students in this class are providing evidence of all strands of the Fine Arts Curriculum, responding, connecting, presenting, and creating. Students are challenged to think of music in an entirely different way than just performing it. So, that's basically what general music has become. I think it's a pretty cool class. Did a good job.
So, as a result of these three points, our students had 189 scheduled fine art concerts, presentations, shows, and events scheduled during the students' 180 school days. And I have an invitation for all of you to some of our spring events that are coming up. Someone pass those out?
To summarize, I just want to say that we're extremely proud of the work we've done, and I am proud enough to say that I would put this curriculum that we've worked on against any curriculum in the state or even the nation because it's first-rate, and that's, I'll put my thumb on it.
Thank you. The board have- Yeah, does the board, any of the board members have questions? I think it's great. The arts need all the support we can give them, and what you've demonstrated here tonight is very impressive. So, thank you for your good work, teachers and students and everybody.
I would echo everything that has been said. I think in this school district, we absolutely honor the arts. We know how important it is for our students, and the teacher leadership program has given us the ability to have these two people, Terry was consulting beforehand, and Michaela, and you saw two wonderful examples of teachers that are trying to make it different so that it's not like it was when we were in school, but it's so engaging. So, thank you for your very, very good work. I agree with you, Terry, that we could put this curriculum up against anywhere and be in first place. Nice job.
I'm going to beg your indulgence. Dr. Bruckner's going to take the stand again here.
We said really, really nice things about you. I'm going to give you a copy of it rather than read it again, but we are very, very pleased to have you in our employ. Wilson is excited. We're doing all sorts of good things, and the board's already honored you and said nice things. Tell us who your guest is.
My guest is my fiancee, Tiffany Torno. That's all she got. She's at Franklin, so she's, yeah. So, we got all the school supporting.
Very nice, very nice. Well, David, on behalf of the school board, we want to recognize you as our Licensed Staff Member of the Month for January. You've done a great job, and the Community Ed Foundation and Stuart Tinley Law are giving you a gift certificate for $50 to Longhorn Steakhouse to go celebrate, so congratulations.
Congratulations, David. We're proud of you. Next on our agenda is the annual technology report. Mr. Fringer.
Good evening, everybody. It's that time in February where I get to spend a little bit of time talking about the technology in our district. I provided a comprehensive report that's in your board packet, lots and lots of information. Certainly not going to try to go over all of that tonight. If you do have questions about anything that was included in that report, I'll take those questions at the end. I'm going to talk about three things really tonight. Three seems to be- Three seems to be the theme of the night. And two of them are initiatives and just a little bit of information about some things that are going on and some really big deals. And then some students, some parents, some teachers who are going to, excuse me, talk about what the technology experience has been like for them related to a specific grant that we received from Google a couple of years ago. In your board packet, there was a lot of information about our CLARITY survey. CLARITY is a research-based evaluation tool that we use to evaluate our technology program in the district. And that tool is administered via survey to students, teachers, and parents twice a year, fall and spring. We are in our third year of CLARITY administration, and our scores are going the right direction as indicated by the green arrow. The case score, or the composite case score, is a lot like an ACT composite. It's made up of a lot of other parts, where ACT is made up of reading and writing, et cetera. This score is made up of classroom access skills and environment, hence case. We get all kinds of data, aggregate data, that is available to teachers and schools as they plan for their building-level technology initiatives, and also to our leadership teams at the district level. And we use that granular data to affect all kinds of things. There are, there's four things that popped out of the data. We have moved from emerging to proficient in the classroom category, and that's the most important category. That's what's going on in our classrooms. And we had been sitting in that emerging category for a while and moved into the proficient area during this most recent survey. The district's rating is now exemplary for access, and that is what you've provided to students with your support of our technology programs. Every student in our district in grades three through 12 have their own computer, and we have very high ratios in pre-K, too. We are a very, very technology-rich school district, and it's because of the support of the school board that that's been possible. Three individual buildings have reached the advanced category, moving from proficient to advanced, and those are Wilson, Abraham Lincoln, and Thomas Jefferson. And it's not by accident that those buildings have had the technology the longest. They were the first to go. Kern, by the way, is right behind. They're a couple of points away from the 1,100 cutoff, but didn't get 1,100, so they're not on the list. They will be next time. So those buildings are moving in the right directions. All of our buildings are moving in the right directions. Lots and lots of progress being made, but it's a milestone. Not many school districts have multiple buildings that are in the advanced category. And the other thing that is really nice to see, the things that we need to work on as indicated by the case survey, are also part of our strategic plans, and we're working on them. And probably the thing that sticks out the most is professional development. Our teachers are hungry for it, and we have two teams working on strategic plans this year, both around professional development, a principal team and a teacher leader team. So by the end of this year, we'll have some articulated strategies to get that professional development area in the case study going in the right direction as well. So that is one initiative or one important thing. The second one, hope you recognize our friend. You may have seen him on a website or seen him at a public event. There's a banner on Broadway. As you're headed west, you'll see our little friend, the Blink Squirrel, Bluffs Community Wi-Fi. And this is a magnificent project. It has received all kinds of acclaim and interest from all around the state, the region, the nation, et cetera. We are happy to report that, obviously, the green areas, I'm going to point a little. This green area and this green area, that was Phase 1, and those are live Wi-Fi zones right now. That's the downtown area and the Wilson and Roosevelt neighborhoods. The Phase 2 area indicated in yellow on the map would be the Franklin area, and that, the installers were on poles today putting up access points. That should be ready to make public in the very near future as a live Blink Wi-Fi zone. And then you'll see the pink area outlined. That's exciting for two reasons. Purposefully chosen in the Bloomer and Canesville neighborhoods as neighborhoods that could, you know, benefit from that type of free Wi-Fi service. And also, I can report that the funding for Phase 3 is in the bag. We have been able to raise the money necessary to do Phase 3, so we'll be moving forward on that soon as Phase 2 is done. So it appears that inertia is doing good things, and after Phase 3 would come Phase 4, and so on. And again, it was a strategic plan created by the district that hatched the whole idea. So the, thank you. So it's to your credit and the approval of that strategic plan, which was, you know, it was sketchy whether that could actually be done. We went out and were able to form the partnerships to get it done. Very exciting stuff. So thank you for your support, and the community will benefit for many, many years for your forward-thinking. And last but not least, and Diane delivered some water, which was appreciated.
While you're drinking, let me just tell you that while we were at the art show, a community member stopped me and said, "That Blink project that's bringing technology to all areas of our community is so important because we no longer have the haves and the have-nots." And it's absolutely true. It's also going to be one of our main projects for the community when we apply for an All America City Grant.
The third thing I want to talk to you about is a grant that we received from Google, and it was not a Google Data Center grant, it was a national Google grant. It was called CS First. CS stands for Computer Science or Computer Science First. Google is interested in growing computer science interest. They need engineers and coders and hardware people to work in their environment, and they realize that the technology environment is underrepresented by minorities and women especially. So they have goals to make sure that girls and minorities have lots of opportunity, have technology-rich experiences, and maybe find their way into a technology career. When CS First was brought to us, it was very narrow. It was a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade curriculum, and we use that curriculum, but what we told them is that our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders have a lot of before-and-after school opportunities because of 21st Century Grants. While the technology was fine for sixth, seventh, and eighth, we asked them, couldn't we do this in elementary and high school also? Couldn't we also expand your CS First program? So they gave us lots of leeway in two years to kind of build something, and they're watching us build it, and there's reports and evaluation. And I have the sense that the National CS First Program may be looking to see what we're doing in elementary schools and high schools, so that they can expand what they do in middle school as well. So with that, I am going to point out some people, and they're going to do a little, quite a bit of the speaking here for a moment, but I wanted to recognize Denise Hoag. That's Denise. And Rini Champion. And Jessica Plujer, who has been here for a number of things. They are, they are the CS First gurus. And Denise is chief guru, and Rini and Jessica are assistant gurus. And essentially, what they do is they organize this thing for the whole district. They spend Saturdays here unpacking stuff and getting tablets ready and creating these kits that go out to the schools. Lots and lots and lots of work. And because of the grant, we're able to pay them for that, which is great. We're also able to pay teachers who work in our schools for before-and-after school activities, which is great for the teachers, it's great for the kids. So the money that was provided did two things. It bought a lot of stuff. It bought all kinds of technology kits. Some of the stuff, I don't, it's so cool. We've got a little video for you. You'll see some of the stuff that they're doing in the elementary schools. The other thing that we were able to do two years ago is help the TJ Robotics program get going a little bit. AL had a little bit of head start over there, and when TJ decided to go down the robotics path as well, needed a little seed money, so on and so forth. AL has been supported as well by CS First. We bought a, is it called a field, the field, the battlefield where you do your thing? We bought, we bought an extra one of those, and we hosted a big robotics tournament last year at Abraham Lincoln. So both teams have benefited, but it was really the seed money to get the TJ Robotics program going. And oh, are they going? So they're doing, they're doing very, very well. So I'm going to ask Denise and Rini and Jessica to come on up, and they're going to take you through the next few slides, and we have some students here, and they're going to show off a little bit, so it should be fun.
I will start. We wanted to show you our number of kids that have been involved in our program so far this year. They've been coming before and after school. We're at 569 total kids. This is mid-year. At last year, at the end of the year, we served 823 students. We've got a couple more elementary schools. We're hoping to get programs started before the end of the year. And we are also having a summer program. Last year, we focused only on a girls' group, and we're adding boys this year. So we're expecting to exceed the number that we serve this year compared to last year. And we're really focusing on getting the girls involved, so our numbers are improving.
This slide just kind of gives you a quick snapshot of the different kinds of opportunities that we have. All of our elementary schools, we just try to start them up as tech clubs, and within the CS First curriculum, there's a lot of different topics in curriculum that we can use in that. So whether it be coding, or the hardwiring, the engineering, so there's a lot of different things that all of our tech clubs get a chance to do. Robotics is primarily at our high school level. Cyber Patriots is something new from a conference I went to last summer, and it's through the Air Force Defense, and it's how to protect the internet. And it's something that we started at the high schools and the middle schools this year, and our current team really has taken off. First Lego League is an elementary and middle school program. Hour of Code is something unique to Wilson, that they do a school-wide after-school activity. Over 200 kids stay after school on the Hour of Code, the day that they recognize Hour of Code, and all the kids are engaged in coding, so they all get to learn how to code. And then, as you can see, the rest of the opportunities. We also have up and coming, yet this year is our summer technology club like Rini had A few highlights for this year from this grant. We've been able to fund these things, and obviously, these are our highlights. Our Hoover team did make it to state this year in the First Lego League competition. Our Kern Cyber Patriot team has went through their first two rounds and have advanced, let's see, they have advanced to semifinals, which will be held on February 19th. And they spend about six hours on a Saturday competing against everyone across the nation. And they have to be one of three teams in order to go on to Worlds. So good luck to the Kern Cyber Patriot. And then the high school robotics teams, both AL and Kern, are world-qualified, so. AL and TJ, sorry. And then we also wanted you to hear how important these opportunities are to a family in our district. And so I welcome Chandler Scott and his mother, Jessie Scott, up.
So can you just give us your name, grade, and school that you attend, Chandler?
I attend Wilson Middle School. I'm in seventh grade, and, well, I go to Wilson.
How long have you been interested in technology, and what sparked your interest?
About fifth grade, when we were doing a programming with robotics and TAG.
All right. When did you start getting involved in technology-related activities, and at what types of technology offerings have you been involved in at your school?
Fourth grade, I joined a computer club, and sixth grade, I did WTEC Hour of Code. And this year, I'm doing cybersecurity and coding and TAG.
All right. Chandler's been very involved. I got to know Chandler last year in my old role as a programs director. He was involved in several different after-school activities. And what made me bring this mother and child to you guys tonight was just his level of involvement, his eager to be involved and stay involved in his school, and his mother's support. Chandler, do you have any takeaways or highlights from all your experiences?
In TAG, we were doing Code Academy, and I can now code in HTML and CSS.
And I have no clue what that is. What are your feelings, Jessie, on Chandler's experiences that he's had in technology and the things that he has to take advantage of at his school?
Well, I'm pretty eager that it's offered to him, first of all, because this will enable him to go on and do pretty much anything with the way technology is becoming. He personally wants to be an architect, but either way, technology will still be involved. So he'll have some of the in-depth background to help him along that and set a good example for his younger brother, who's looking to become a video game programmer, I guess, so teach him all that coding.
Jessie, do you feel that these opportunities after school and through his TAG involvement have helped his education and his future career choices?
So reiterate all that I just said, I'm indigo. But it does keep him busy. Even though I work at home, it's nice that he has somewhere to go and have new friends that he's not bored at home and sitting on the Xbox and, you know, learning all the video gaming for his brother.
And any overall feelings of all the after-school opportunities, Chandler, that you've been offered at the middle school level? What would you have to say about them?
I can do stuff that I would like to do that I'm not offered during school.
Very good. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce our Thomas Jefferson part of our robotics team. We have about 20 members. And Jorge, Seth, Ernie, and Anna, and Tiana, joined us. I forgot she was in the choir, so she's with us tonight. They're going to show you the robot that is currently qualified for Worlds. It is number 15 in the world right now. It's based off a point system, so every week at tournaments, they can get their points up, so our ranking changes every week. Hopefully, it keeps going up. We currently have three of our four teams have qualified for Worlds. The cutoff is March 7th, so we're hoping that they stay that way. So every, go ahead. Yeah. Do you want me to stop talking? Every year, we have a different challenge. This year, it's called Nothing But Net, so the balls are trying to shoot.
So I don't know if you want me to shoot him at all. Okay, so my name is Seth Arthur. I am the team leader for Team 2501J. As you can see on my beautiful license plates here, 2501J, yeah. Everyone here is on my team except for Jorge. He's on a different team. But, so what I love about robotics, I get to, is I discovered what I want to do with my life. I came in and I learned about what it is to build and program and put them all together. I'm also the lead programmer for our school. But just, like, going to Worlds was such an amazing experience for us, because we got to, like, compete with teams from, like, Singapore and China and Ireland and just, like, it was just an insane opportunity. And so I wanted to say thank you to Google for starting us up, this grant. So I don't know if you guys want to see him shoot at all, but, okay, all right.
Pick on your dad.
Yeah, so our robot has a couple functions. Basically, the whole point of the game is to pick up balls off the ground and score them. And in these nets, they're about three feet tall. The fields, like, shooting across the field is like 17 feet. So that's what our long shooter is designed to do. But here's our quote-unquote short shooter. We made some change, there's some improvements today. So it's not very short of a shooter anymore.
I'm from Team 2501B, and I'm really proud of the program that has been created, and I'd like to thank the school board for giving us the opportunity, us students, to be a part of this, and the teachers, Ms. Kramas, Ms. Hoag, who have been really supportive. And I just enjoy being here in the club almost every day. It's probably my favorite part of the day. We, I'm really happy that we have, like, three robots qualified for the World Tournament, and I just hope it keeps getting better and better. And we're trying to get younger kids, too, to come up. We try to recruit the freshmen, the sophomores, the juniors, because we want the program to continue. Because we want the program to continue to go once we leave the high school, so that the name keeps running.
Do you want to say anything else? I think we have the most girls in robotics out of any high school.
Oh, yeah.
Hello, my name's Anna Rodriguez. And I just wanted to say that this club is really eye-opening, like, for me. I didn't really know much about technology or programming, as our head programmer really knows a lot. I've been trying to learn a lot. This program is really, like, very beneficial for me, that I never really paid much attention to, like, technology or programming. But it's a really, it's like an open door to a lot of possibilities that you could want to do. Thank you.
Denise, Denise?
Yes, sir.
As a parent of one of these students, can I say something? Really more just about when we go to tournaments, and we have a diverse student, I guess, population in our robotics team. And there are many, I would say, other schools where they're sort of the nerdy white boy, you know? I mean, I don't want to say it any other way.
Male-dominated group?
And so, we come in there. Yeah, male-dominated group. And we come in there, and we're very different than they are. And it's exciting to see that all of our people are learning this, for our people to learn how to build the robots and run the electrical components, and then actually do the coding so all the motors and the gyros and sensors all talk to each other well. And it's just very exciting, and then to see these kids take something that they didn't know they would have been passionate about, I think, and suddenly become really passionate about it. And inside of about two calendar years' time, to have, I think, taken over, really, maybe as the best robotics program in the Midwest. Would that be fair to say?
Yeah.
Yeah, first in state, first in region. And to have four teams qualified for the US Open, I think there's, I don't know how many are qualified over at AL. But really, when you look at Council Bluffs Community Schools, there aren't any other, you know, I don't think many, OPS can't say, you know, they've got a lot of teams qualified. But as far as having won lots of tournaments, you know, if it's not us at tournaments winning, AL's won quite a few with their different teams. I'd like to brag that I think TJ's are a little better this year. And they are a little better this year. But, but, you know, it's interesting, too, that I think that as board members, we had JJ Harvey with her son involved. So, I think this is a good place, if you are a board member, to have a child in the school district, get him involved in robotics. But it just needs these kids, and you have, of these five, I don't know about anybody else, but I know Seth and Jorge both want to go on and do robotics, you know, in college. And it's just a great path. And if we can put more into these really applied STEM disciplines, I think we can really change a lot of lives in Council Bluffs.
Sounds like the opportunities that you're offering for after-school are building blocks for those programs. So, it's really neat.
I'm Tiana Letham, and this is my first year doing robotics. But I just wanted to say that I wish that I had known about this program a long time ago, because it's really amazing. And I don't know if this is what I want to do with my life, but I know that it opens my career choices to a lot of other opportunities. And I just think it's really cool. And the stuff I'm learning, I hope that, you know, like, when the seniors are gone, I can help keep it up.
Can I have one more story? Sorry. I know we're going long. So, when you go to a tournament, it's not just one team that wins. You go into an alliance. If you're in first place, before the alliance starts, you pick the second-place alliance or you pick the third-place alliance. And then, you go in as this big alliance and you win the whole tournament. So, we've already qualified. There's not much more we can win. And so, Jorge and Seth's teams are in an alliance. They have to pick a third team. They've already qualified. They've already done everything they can. So, they pick the last-placed middle-school team to be with them. And they win. So, this last place, I'm going to start crying. This last-place middle-school team now gets to go on to regionals and nationals. And they're crying, you know, these boys are crying, and the moms are crying. And the mom writes a letter to Todd Barnett. And that's what I love about robotics. So, I just wanted to say that.
That's great.
Okay, one last.
We have one more person.
Absolutely.
I'm Mr. Kram. This is actually my third year teaching.
Please go to the mic and talk. Well, it's for our public.
This is my third year in the district teaching. I spent 20 years in the military. And when I came into this program, I had reservations about it. I wasn't sure what to expect. But this is the most grounded program I've ever seen. It sets them up for real-world experiences. They not only design this thing, they build it, they program it. When they get there, they present this to a panel of judges, which is building their interview techniques. They've all got notebooks talking about every change they make to this robot. They document. The program at AL and TJ were amazing. What we've accomplished in the Council Bluffs Cool District is unheard of in Iowa. None of the other teams in the state of Iowa will play VEX, because Council Bluffs rules VEX. Everybody else is going to go and play first. They do, there's another competing robotics competition. But we went over and were graciously accepted by the state of Nebraska, and we compete in their regional. And they're happy to have us, because we do bring, we have six teams that are regionally qualified and six teams that are nationally qualified. And hopefully, out of those six teams, we'll bring three or four of those teams to Worlds this year. So, and one thing I will say about this group of kids is, again, they're amazing. I really, I knew they were amazing, but when my phone rings at Tuesday afternoon, when I get about 15 minutes after I got the email from Ms. Lestrowski saying we will not be having school, and Jorge's on the other line, "Mr. Kram, can we come in and build robots tomorrow?" And I've never been around any sport or activity or anything like this where the kids are that dedicated and really want to be in the building to put in the time. And I think Mr. Arthur would attest that Mrs. Arthur would like to see Mr. Seth home a little bit more than he's been.
Thank you.
And one last part of the presentation. We are growing little robotics students in our elementary schools via the CS First Grant. And instead of having them all come here and stay till midnight, we're going to show you a short video that outlines some of the things going on. And this is at three schools, but there are many programs at many schools. That's their block-based code.
And just looking ahead, we've done a lot of things great with the Google grant so far. A couple of things that we're doing this year also is to help support the school day and technology initiatives, especially with the TAG programs. A lot of them do technology, as Chandler Scott had mentioned today. So, we're allowing some of the equipment we purchased with this grant to be used during the school day to touch more students and give those opportunities. Technology clubs at all the schools, we still have some elementaries yet to reach this year. Summer school, our summer middle-schools tech camps, we're going to add the boys this year. And the three gurus and Mr. Fringer, we're working on developing a sustainability plan, since our funding is supposed to be done this year. And we have a lot of great equipment. We want to keep the kids engaged and keep moving forward. So, any questions?
Questions from board members?
And we would take questions about anything that you saw or anything in the comprehensive report that was in your packet.
Really tempted to take the robot out into the mall and see what it can do.
I think he heard you.
I don't really have a question, but I want to commend you for that written report in our board. It was very well-stated, very easy to follow. And, you know, I'm just amazed what all you and your staff are doing. And thank you, students, for being here. Not very many kids will give up a couple hours on a school night to come and present to adults. So, I appreciate that.
Right. I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Next is our library media report.
Top set.
Yeah, that's a tough act to follow.
I feel really, really bad. I am going to introduce Amy Recker to you tonight. She's the Director of Classroom Ready for United Way of the Midlands. Just a little bit of background information. She's been sitting here since 6:30. But she got to see all the great things that are going on in Council Bluffs, and so did her kids. So, thank you, guys. You had a comprehensive report in your board packet about the great work that our library media specialists, our teacher librarians are doing, and gave you some of the regular information we give you about circulation and age of collections. What I wanted to do tonight is really kind of look at, pull up about to the 30,000-foot level and think about why we have libraries, why do we have school libraries? And that's really to provide access to children, to have quality print materials in their hands. And school libraries are one of the major ways that we do that in Council Bluffs. But I'm really excited tonight to share with you another way that we have an opportunity in Council Bluffs to put quality print in the hands of students who may not have quality print in their homes. So, I'd like to introduce to you Amy Recker, Director of Classroom Ready, to talk to us a little bit tonight about an opportunity that we have in the Council Bluffs schools to be part of a program called Book Trust.
Thanks, Corey. And thank you so much for having me tonight. I have to tell you that I love working with Dr. Brechner and Dr. Vorthman. They're such wonderful advocates for kids, particularly in the area of literacy. And you know, more than I do, that when you have children that don't have access to books, it's harder to inspire that lifelong love of learning. And so, the United Way of the Midlands is working with an organization out of Denver, Colorado. It's called Book Trust. And Book Trust recognizes that, and I'll give you a little bit of their mission. But they're an evidence-based nonprofit whose mission is to empower children from families to choose and own books, inspiring a passion for reading and cultivating increased literacy skills and lifelong learning. And so, the important pieces of this particular program are choice. And what this program will do is we're doing a pilot in 10 schools throughout the Omaha Council Bluffs metro. And that, of course, includes at least one school in the Council Bluffs School District, where the children will all have the opportunity to choose the books. They'll get a budget, which encourages lifelong skills, a budget of $7 every month to be able to choose books that they will then own. And it's through Scholastic Books that they'll be able to own these books. So, over the course of one year, they'll be able to own up to 20 to 25 books of their own and take them home with them and help encourage that family engagement as well. So, reading books is very important, and we're delighted to be able to bring this program in. We're in the process of doing the fundraising right now for this program. And we look forward to doing a three-year project, a three-year pilot project in this community and throughout the Omaha metro. So, thank you very much, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. That sounds exciting.
We provided some comprehensive information about where we might like to head with our library media program in your board packet. We have excellent teacher librarians who are working very diligently to make sure our libraries are top-quality and that they're up-to-date. And we know that there are things that we could do to do even better. Our list of priorities is very long at the time, as you well know, and our strategic plan kind of points us in the direction. But it's something that we want to pay attention to in the future, so. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Vorthman on that?
I have a question regarding the method by which students check out books. Is it still majority paperback checking out from our school libraries? Or are they using their Chromebooks or other such digital media to check out books in a digital format?
Yeah, we do have access to some digital libraries as well through some consortia agreements and some that we own ourselves. But the circulation rates that you saw on your board packet are primarily for hardback and paperback texts.
But they also have access through the Council Bluffs Public Library to access books through Council Bluffs Public Library. So, we, I use them quite a bit. You just download them on my device, and I got it. And it's frozen.
What you see, the figures you see mainly are based on the print circulation. And I wanted to highlight the digital circulation that we have going on. I'm Mary Newman. I'm a teacher librarian at Council Bluffs. I'm Ms. Jefferson. I think this is included in your packet. The, we have with our library automation program, we have imported all the databases that are provided by the area, plus some that are also free. And as more and more of our students are now doing their research using online resources instead of print, we're seeing more and more digital circulation. So, when you look at the statistics here, we have last year's compared to this year's. We can only track the searches they did. We can't tell you how many of those articles they read. But as you can see, in all the elementaries, middle schools, and high schools, the use of digital resources-